Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. This is the Hudsonville City Commission. Regular session dated April 8th, 2025. Would everybody please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Rowe?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now's in moment of silence. I think it'd be appropriate if we all gave a thought to all our friends and family that are out of town enjoying themselves hopefully in a warm location. We have one of our commissioners who's in Florida right now. I spoke to him and he is doing well and very happy, as I can imagine. But I wish them all Godspeed and safe journeys. So let's have a safe, safe moment of silence for all our friends. Thank you. Now's the time for consent agenda items. There are seven. City Commission Strategic Plan Update Session Minutes dated March 8th. City Commission Regular Session Minutes dated March 11th. City Commission Special Session Minutes dated March 25th. Board Review Minutes dated March 4th, 10th, and 11th. DDA Board Meeting Minutes dated March 19th. Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated March 19th. And the accounts payable reviewed and approved by the meeting, by the Finance Committee and the City Manager. Are there any discussions in those minutes? Real quickly, I do have a couple of comments. The DDA does make reference to Jack as now assumed interim role as the Chair to the DDA. Appreciate you standing up to Jack because Phil's retirement and we'll be seeing Matt.
Hoeksmann.
Hoeksmann, who's also a friend of yours, you've known him for several years. He was the new president of the...
West Michigan Community Bank.
West Michigan Community Bank. We had lunch with him earlier in the week. Spoke very highly of you, by the way. He's pretty excited to join us on the DDA at some point. So I'd expect to see him on the next Commission Meeting Minutes. The other item is the Planning Commission from March 19th. There's been quite a bit of discussion. I think the Commission's aware that there was quite a bit of discussion at that Planning Commission Meeting on the March 19th from us on the residents. There was a notice that went out for a public hearing. A lot of discussion. There were five residents that didn't get the letter, but nonetheless they were available to be in attendance and provided significant amount of comments to the City Commission. They, I think, felt that there was some malfeasance in that they didn't get the letter. And in the interest of that, the minutes show that there was a public hearing with the approval, but in discussion with the City Manager, we're just gonna do a do-over so that it takes that controversy away from them, gives them their opportunity to come in and speak if they so choose. So that's, I think that's probably an error in the minutes that will have to be reflected because it shows...
Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission did conduct the public hearing and did approve the resolution. So the minutes are accurate, essentially what we're doing here. We're calling it again, ensuring that the notification statements are hit. So the minutes do reflect the actions of the meeting. There'll be another set of minutes reflecting the same actions with regards to those events.
Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent agenda items carry. Thank you, Larry. Reminded me that we missed public comments. So if there's anybody here in the public that would like to address the City Commission, please stand up and address us now. Seeing and hearing none, there aren't any public comments. Please note that. Moving on to the public hearing for commercial rehabilitation district creation. This is a recommended motion is there? Would somebody please move that?
You have to open the public hearing first.
Thank you. I now need to open the public hearing on the commercial rehab district creation request.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-1812, approving the creation of a commercial rehab rehabilitation district for the landings at Rush Creek, a Lakati Group LLC redevelopment project.
Support. It's been moved and supported. The public hearing's still open. Do you want to speak to this or a closed public hearing?
No, I can just...
Go ahead.
Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, as you know, this is a part of our economic development toolkit with regards to developments. It's widely used across the state. This is Commercial Rehabilitation Act or PA 210. City Commission should be able to first. We've done this before. This is part of the incentive package for landings at Rush Creek. Just a reminder, it's an 84-unit development located behind signatures. Properties are being taken for roughly, I think just shy of 25 years. So this is one component. And I'll be attending Ottawa County Finance Committee on Thursday morning along with DDA member and senior rental consultant, Cook Birch Walker, and then Economic Development Director Jacob Lard. I'll be going up there to speak to the project.
And when is the final vote at the County Commission?
If it gets approval from the Finance Committee, it'll go to the board as a poll, in which case we'll drive the rest out again to protect the secrets of approval. That date is not set yet. Depending on the county administrator and the agenda.
We've discussed it at length with our special session and our work sessions. I don't think there's any surprises here. I don't anticipate any pushback from the county. This is our third or fourth time with similar projects. But nonetheless, you never know until it happens. So we're counting on it a little bit there, going to the county and making sure it happens. I mean, this is hopefully our last one that we'll be coming to the county with for quite a while, I would expect. Any discussion with the Commissioners up here about this? We're all aware of what this is all about. Would you make sure that you send us a text at the end of that on Thursday so that we all are aware of how it went and what the vote was, please?
I can most certainly do that.
Anything else to discuss? Close the public hearing? And I will call for a vote. Clerk?
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Thanks, Tyler. There's a lot of work that's been done on this one, as we all know. Moving on to Departmental Reports. Fire Department Chief? Before we come up here, I just want to thank the chief for last Saturday. It was a great day. The Sea Cadets couldn't stop talking about it. And I think you might have even recruited somebody from the staff to join the department.
Well, I did. I got a new firefighter out of the deal. And even better, he's like, hey, you need a new fire truck? Come see me. So it was good. No, we had a lot of fun. That was good. It was good and good for the Sea Cadets to experience that a little bit. So they learned a little bit about turnout gear and the SCBA and then they got the opportunity to throw some water as well. So a good day. The report for March. We had 69 calls for service in the month of March. So once again, a busy, busy month. That brings our total for the year to 201. There were a couple of fires. They weren't all medicals. We did respond to the new wall fire in Georgetown. I happened to be out of town that particular night, so I wasn't able to go. But the crew did a great job helping them. And then we did a couple other fires. We had a car fire and a brush fire and helped James Towne out on a brush fire as well. You see in the report that there are three reports from life ambulance. They finally got some of their reports. So we were behind a few months. So December, January, and February are there. Their response time is about average. So we do keep an eye on that yet, but it's about average. Our cadets are working their way through Fire Academy. They expect to be done sometime around mid-May. So we are looking in the next six weeks here for them to complete that. That kind of wraps up the month. Any questions?
Can you speak briefly about how we deal with EV vehicles that catch on fire?
So EV vehicles is kind of an evolving technology right now. And the way that we approach them. The first thing that they had said was lots of water. Just keep putting water on it. But then they found that what are you gonna do with that runoff? So the next thing they had said was, well, let's cover it. And that seems to be the best technology right now is to cover it, smother it, drag it out to a tow, like a wrecker company's tow yard and just let it burn inside of a covered environment. We have a fire blanket that we actually got from last year's conference in Indianapolis. We were one of the winners of that. So the city benefited. And so that blanket is on the truck that responds out on car fires. It's a very heavy, heavy blanket. I call it a blanket. It's more like a tarp, but it's a fireproof tarp. One-time use, but it will contain all that runoff. And it's just kind of like a big garbage bag and put it right around there.
Have you had any?
We have not had any. No, we've had EV crashes, but nothing that's given us a fire yet. So we're trained for it. We've seen a lot of the videos and the training shows about the thermal runaway. So there's a lot. I expect that some of the conferences this... So tomorrow I leave for Indianapolis again for the instructors conference. A lot of the classes will be with that in mind. What's the latest and greatest updated, how to handle these fires?
Is the material toxic after you put it out?
Yeah, so whatever inside the battery, you know, you have the lithium ion inside there. That lithium is environmentally not friendly. So we have to be cautious of that, too.
I assume you've been training high voltage involved with those.
Right, so...
Lots of grabbing the wrong...
Yeah, so every car, every car has a place for firefighters to cut. And it used to be that there was a book. Every year they print a book. Well, now it goes to an app. So we all have an app that will tell us exactly where to cut the car. Where to cut, not just cut the car, where to cut the wiring. We've had it on two occasions up on the expressway where we've had to quickly look at the app, figure out where the cut points are, and disable the car. You don't want to do it wrong. It's gonna hurt. Yep. So, but that's all part of training. We stay up on it and do what we can.
Anything else for the Fire Chief? Thanks, Steve. Thanks for all your duty. Sheriff?
Good evening, everybody. Again, Sergeant Michael Tammy with the Sheriff's Office. The monthly report for March, the Sheriff's Office responded to 173 calls for service in the month of March as opposed to the 162 from February. And that's real consistent with the weather warming up. Calls for service increasing, just everybody coming out of the house, out of their house for the spring and getting outside and kids playing and things like that. And that kind of transitions into the next set of numbers there. Our traffic contacts increased significantly from 120 in February to about 174 in March, which is consistent. Again, I think I mentioned this when I was here two months ago, that the traffic-related stuff in this community is of extreme importance to the members of this community, especially now, excuse me, that the kids are getting out, playing in the yards, kicking the balls, playing catch. In fact, I was just riding with my kids the other day off-duty and I watched two little boys under the age of six probably were playing catch or lacrosse. And lacrosse ball rolled right out into the street. Two cars had to just slam on their brakes because those two little boys were about ready to... They ended up not going out in the street. But those are the types of things that our community is extremely concerned about this time of year with everybody getting back outside. So our deputies are doing a great job of just, again, educating by traffic contacts within the community. And that continues to help remind everybody just to stay diligent and conscious of what's going on around them this time of year when they're on the road. In March, the entire fleet of the Sheriff's Office patrol cars were outfitted with our in-car cameras, which was in addition to back in December, we were outfitted with our body cams. So that's been a few months now. The dust has settled from the transition of being out in the field, having body cameras. Now we've got the in-car cameras, which just continues to help hold us accountable for what we do. Everything we do now in this field, in this profession, is recorded. Every contact that we have with the citizens here in Hudsonville is recorded. That's all foable. And that's actually a huge benefit, not only for the organization, but for our deputies as well. It's just a degree of accountability for officer complaints that come in. There's no question as to how our deputies are communicating, how they're handling situations and especially when there's controversy among that with somebody that they might have contact with. So those are good things. This time of year, we're gonna be getting our speed trailer back. Deputy Skolma is kind of the one that's responsible for that. He's on spring break and when he gets back next week, that'll be one of the first things he does is get that thing and wipe the dust off it and get ready to get it back out there in the community. Again, helping with that traffic enforcement, traffic-related issues. So the deputies are stepping up. They're helping me. Like, as many of you know, I also have the responsibilities in Georgetown Township. So the four or five deputies here in Hudsonville are doing a great job just kind of helping with the day-to-day stuff. Having some interaction with the City Manager a little bit and just helping me with those day-to-day equipment things that Sergeant Segal was taking care of on a regular basis that they're just, they're doing a great job stepping up and helping me out in some of those areas. So that's what I have. Any questions?
I think it's an important point on the cameras that, from my perspective, it really protects the deputy.
Sure does.
As much as it protects the residents in the community because there's, the deputies rarely do anything wrong.
Right.
And it's, they're falsely accused quite often.
Right. As an officer in this profession for just shy of 25 years, you know, I'm aware of how we, especially how much pride we take here in Ottawa County and how we relate to the community. Does every deputy in every situation always make the right decision? Of course not. We're just as human as everybody else. But the degree of professionalism that this agency takes pride in has always been top-notch. And when those, I've had several situations already since December where I've had officer complaints on the deputies. And the degree of confidence that I now have to go in and just, I can watch those videos. I can call the individual, get the information they have about what their perspective of the experience was and then compare it exactly to what's on that body cam video. And it's just, it's a no-brainer. And to reiterate what you said, it's so helpful for us as supervisors to be able to just reinforce that, hey, this is how our, if you want to even come in and watch it with me, I'll be happy to do that with you if you disagree with how that interaction went. So it's just a huge benefit for us, so.
Any other questions, discussion for the sergeant? Thank you, Sergeant Tammy.
Thank you.
And don't forget your money there.
Oh, okay.
Steve, you forgot yours. Dave?
All right, good evening.
Just for the record, a year from now, we'll be at the 75th anniversary of tornado.
Uh...
Right?
I don't think, six years, I think. 1956?
It'll be the 7th.
30.
70.
Yes. So, and actually Tyler and I talked very briefly about that. I talked briefly with Lindsay about that as well and also with people out at County Emergency Management. It's a ways off, but we want to do something for the 75th and have some sort of event like we did for the 50th. All right, a couple of things I wanted to highlight on the report. First of all, the traffic accident and the power line incidents. My team was called out for both of those. And what I want to highlight there is, in both cases, I was not available. One, I was outside of town, outside of Grand Rapids. The other one, my truck was in the shop, so I didn't have a suitable vehicle. So my deputy director, John Lawrence, was a point person for my team on both of those. And he did a fantastic job of not only organizing the team, running the team on the scene, but also keeping me informed during and after the incident. So I just want to give him credit where that's due. Then the last thing on the list there. We were at full staff for a little while and now we're not. Kirk Hypen on my team decided to resign. Very good terms, right? We, he and I talked about it over the course of a month or so and he decided that, for him, this is kind of run its course. He was at the point where he wasn't sure he was able to really give his best, not in terms of performance, but in terms of just interaction with the public. He said, "I feel myself just kind of losing my patience with this and getting kind of tired of it." He said, "I don't want to snap at somebody, so it's time for me to step back." And I thought that was wise on his part. So, yeah, we were glad to have him for the time we did, a number of years. And he will be missed, but we will stay in our good relationship with him. Any questions on anything else?
Mr. Sheriff? Thanks, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Don't forget your...
Couple of rabbits up for? One for Steve, too?
Moving on to the City Treasurer's monthly report for March.
Good evening, everyone. We're three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year and our expenditures are at 72.37, so tracking just under what we expect there. And then let's see, what else can we... Our investment report. We earned $47,319 in interest this last month. So that continues to hold pretty steady. No bond payments until August. We pay our interest on the general obligation loan and then next January and February, we'll make another payment on everything. So we're in the midst of budget season right now. So lots of meetings with me and Tyler going through the budget and it's been pretty all-consuming the last two weeks, so, yeah.
Any discussion, questions? The Treasurer? Tom and Tyler and I had breakfast and one of the things we talked about, Andrew, was that a year from now, we won't have the DPW bond that will be done. We'll pay it off, the $300,000 for shipping property.
Correct.
And we'll have the last payment, the $500,000 on the fire truck, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Those three things obviously are hurting or a challenge to budget this year.
Correct.
I think it's important we don't lose sight of the fact that those are a one-timer and are gonna be done. So just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, that this is, I know, a difficult year for budgeting. But those are, we're close to the end of all three of those. Nobody got anything out of that? You and I could talk about that only?
That was accurate, summer.
And we're also making some money on our interest, which is also very nice, so. Any questions for the Treasurer? Hearing none, we will move on to Number Five, Economic Development Director Report Grant Tracker. Jacob is here tonight.
Is it better option one or option two? It feels like an eye exam, so I apologize for that. But it's better option two for me, if you're curious. So I'm gonna be with you next month for a quarterly update. So just a couple of quick updates with where the grant tracker's at right now. We got a couple of new applications in, including two for the MDNR grants. We talked about those at length with Sarah a couple of weeks ago at the special session that we had. So you can see the dollar amounts reflected there. Those will change over the coming months, but we worked very well with our representatives from the MDNR on really shaping both of those applications to be in line with what the MDNR is looking for, both for the trust fund. They have an entire scoring program. Some of that's based on Alice data. So really trying to work with our representatives to make sure that we're submitting the strongest applications possible. And then a good bit of news, one of the library, the ALA program, we did apply for up to $20,000 on that one. We ended up getting $10,000. So half of something's better than all of nothing, right? Well, we'll take 10 grand. That's gonna help us with some of our library programming. So exciting news with that. And then Mary just applied last week for another one. This is more for programming for youth literacy. It's gonna be towards kind of multisensory equipment and programming for the toddlers and the youth section. They have a couple options right now, but kind of building out on those. So just increasing the capacity of what we have right now. And then I know Tyler's got a note about one that I did not add on there for the resurfacing of 32nd Avenue. And then I'll have another update next month. But the two businesses for the Match on Main grant, those are gonna be submitted this week as well. The MEDC has been having a couple of issues with their submission page. So that was cleared up over the weekend. And we'll be submitting two applications on behalf of Leaping Panda Hobbies and Hudsonville Chiropractic through the Downtown Development Authority. So we'll have two more applications up there next month. Any questions?
Any questions for Jacob? Jacob, I'm really impressed that you come in here and brief us on this. I know over the last few years, we've gotten much more aggressive and productive about grants. There's a lot of free money out there on the table. A lot of people don't realize. And I think it took me a few years to realize it was out there.
Sure.
But we appreciate you being aggressive and working with the staff because something about free money, it's just, it's a wonderful thing, but you gotta work to get it.
Exactly, yeah. No, and shout-out to the staff as I've continued to onboard. And it's been six months for me now, but there's been opportunities that people have brought forth to me that I maybe wasn't aware of for working with some of the employees that have been on staff for a while and have some of that institutional and tribal knowledge for me to be able to kind of plug and play a little bit quicker than I would have otherwise, so.
So all these grants we've been getting have been public grants. Are there opportunities for private grants through...
Absolutely, yeah. That's certainly as we've been exploring the Village Green and some of our other projects, public-private partnerships and our community foundations, what other grant opportunities can we look at outside of the alphabet soup from state, federal agencies?
Any questions for Jacob? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, public safety, temporary traffic control order. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve temporary traffic order Number 25-02 for total road closure of Prospect Street between School and 32nd Ave on April 14th through April 18th, 2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported 30 seconds. Senator Tyler?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, starting on Monday, we're gonna close the building and shutting down Prospect Street, both directions. There'll be a hard close just east of Muffler Manor, just west of the creek. No business, resident driveways will be impacted. Businesses west of the closure will need to access from School Ave. And residents, businesses east of the creek will need to access via 32nd Ave. Lindsay and T and Bob have done a great job notifying local businesses of potential closure. The reason for the closure is utility hookup as part of the chair station.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call. I don't, you can do a voice in this, can I? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Moving on to Administration, Ottawa County Contract for Assessing Services. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, a motion to approve the Ottawa County Contract for Assessing Administrative Services. assessing administrative services as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported, I believe Josh is in the, oh, there you are. Welcome, you had to drive all the way from.
Yep. Start with Grand Haven.
All the way from Grand Haven.
Yep.
Get you out here as fast as.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It's hard to believe that three years has come and gone already, but I just wanted to make myself available if there were any questions on the terms of, of the contract. So scope of it is exactly the same as it has been in the past. We're just, you know, adjusting the cost to continue to account for the cost of our labor and materials that we need to provide the service.
How much of the, the contract is actually IT involved and how much, what's, what's the rate?
It's roughly ninety percent is staff and benefits.
Yeah.
And then about the remaining ten percent is IT services, you know, we're levy, or we use different technologies with iPads, stuff like that for data collection now to try to stay on top, on top of current technological trends in our business, so.
I think this is what the eighth year you've been doing this, I'm trying to think.
Um, I think we're on year six now.
Six. Six. Any questions for Josh from the commission? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, you're hired, thanks, Josh.
Perfect, thank you, we appreciate this.
I should say you're not fired.
Yeah, right? Thank you.
Moving on to conditional rezoning from IND-g to NC at two-eight-nine-four Highland Drive, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two-five-dash-three-three-seven to amend section two dot O-two dot O-one of the City of Hudsonville zoning ordinance to conditionally rezone two-eight-nine-four Highland Drive from industrial general, quote, IND-g, unquote, to neighborhood commercial, quote, NC, unquote, subject to the conditional rezoning agreement.
It's been moved and supported, I know the applicant is dying, Doc, to show us his renderings, which is for the record at the last planning commission, the residents that were there all spoke in favor of this rezoning and the support of, of the doctor's vision here for opening a new business in Hudsonville. We know, Doc, you said there's not an oral surgeon between Granville and Holland essentially, right?
Correct. And then north and south, it's a fifty-plus minute drive.
It's, it's two or three months to get into an oral surgeon.
Three months.
So now, your practice right now is where?
I'm in the Detroit area.
Born and raised locally?
I was born in the Detroit area, my grandparents are from here.
Ah, coming home to the roots, huh?
Yes. My mother grew up here. So, good evening, commission members, new and familiar faces. My name is Austin Bay, I'm an Orland Maxlow facial surgeon, seeking to, to approve a conditional rezon of twenty-eight-ninety-four Highland Drive from industrial general to neighborhood commercial specifically limited to general office and medical office uses. As Mr. Mayor was saying, that Hudsonville holds a deep personal significance for me. As I said, my grandparents called this place home and were actively involved here. My summers as a child were spent exploring the town, at that time a much smaller town, attending Forest Grove Reformed Church, and I gained a firsthand appreciation of the strong community spirit and family values here. And that's why I'd like to come back and, and contribute professionally and personally. The Hudsonville community, as you know, has experienced significant growth, twenty-two percent in the past decade, specifically the four-nine-four-two-six area code, yet again there's no practicing oral surgeon. Local residents have to wait long times or drive extended distances. And at the recent planning commission meeting during the public hearing, a local resident specifically highlighted this challenge, stating that she was waiting three months and driving thirty minutes to see an oral surgeon, begging me to open soon. My proposed practice directly addresses this need by offering high-quality accessible oral surgery right here in Hudsonville. Initially, I'll begin as a solo practitioner, but the space is sufficient for expansion to up to three oral surgeons. The facility will be a sixty-one-hundred square foot facility now. Is up, here we go. Sixty-one-hundred square foot facility with seven treatment rooms, three consultation rooms, and we'll employ about nine local employees. We'll provide both routine surgical, oral surgical services such as wisdom teeth, dental implants, infection management and oral pathology, and emergency care such as for infections and facial injuries. The office will be open four weekdays per week with additional flexibility open for emergency cases, ensuring minimal weekend traffic and limited impact on local infrastructure and city services. This conditional rezoning received strong support from the planning commission due to its clear community benefits. I believe that the rezone is compatible, consistent and capable based on zoning considerations. Regarding compatibility, the practice aligns closely with the 2030 master plan, which emphasizes vibrant livable neighborhoods in a diverse local economy. Though not directly matching the future land use map, the proposed medical office aligns seamlessly with Hudsonville's broader vision of providing essential community services. Regarding consistency, the location is uniquely positioned between the nature center, residential townhomes, and the dust, and existing industrial properties. This practice serves as an ideal transition use and softens the impact from industrial to residential areas and recreational areas behind, overall enhancing the neighborhood's overall harmony. I'd like to show you some renderings here, so quite proud of these. This is actually the side, the exit here, sorry, so everyone can see, the side where patients will exit after their sedation procedures.
Can you hold it up for the camera, so the camera can get on there?
Thank you. Here's the corner of the office. And I have a view, very approximate view from the road. There's actually a hill here and we plan to add some landscaping, both as you come up, up the hill for the, from the entrance, and then over off to the side where there's an industrial siding company next door. And then lastly, the, the front of the office here with our main entrance right there, large windows for the waiting area and hopefully ample parking there. So, lastly regarding capability, the property itself is exceptionally suitable for our intended use. It already has necessary public utilities, appropriate infrastructure, and the site's size and topology easily accommodate the proposed medical facility without placing additional strain on city resources. I appreciate your consideration for this proposal. I believe this rezone will significantly benefit Hudsonville's residents, providing local access to critical healthcare services, supporting community growth and enriching the local economy. I welcome any questions that you might have and we very much appreciate your time.
Any discussions or questions to the doctor? Appreciate you locating here.
Excuse me?
Appreciate you locating here.
Oh, it's, it almost doesn't feel real, growing up here and exploring, riding four-wheelers with my cousins, so hopefully it'll do the same for our kids.
And what Jeremy and I said on the planning commission, I think the enthusiasm for that practice was well noted and we appreciate your work with the planning commission.
I appreciate that.
And the staff here certainly. Any other discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, the rezoning has been approved, thank you, Doctor.
Thank you so much.
Item number nine, the BSNA cloud upgrade, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the BSNA cloud proposal as presented for current modules and adding the human resources module.
Support. It's been moved and supported, Tyler Groth.
Yeah, I'll kick it off and turn it over to Andrew, he's needy in this. BSNA is our, essentially our county software, it's got bells and whistles, it's a tool we use every day. Well, back to a few years ago, BSNA has decided to use a cloud platform. Within previous finance director, Jared Garcia, was here, something that we discussed about that time, it was still during the rollout and we didn't want to be the beta test community. Since that time, they've definitely improved their software and it's presented before me now. One thing, before I turn it over to Andrew, is the city did purchase a new server last year, pretty expensive, maybe forty, forty thousand dollars, and largely to support BSNA. And so through our discussions with a new server, we were looking at, well, what can we do to make sure that we're protecting the taxpayers' investment? Of course, in this case, we're looking to add two security cameras near the emergency services entrances and exits at the northwest portion of the building. And due to that technology, we need a new server. So we're working with the IT firms and right now, we believe, I met with John Garlick of DuePoint, our IT consultant, last week, and we are confident, although not official, that we can repurpose our server to support the security measures, thus protecting the investment as we navigate to the plan. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Andrew, who's been needy in this, and Andrew, I just want to say, and to the commissioners and members of the public, our finance team took several meetings with BSNA, asking questions about the adaptability, the use, the dashboard. So to say that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's, I can look into the audience, I'd hope you all would say that Andrew and Tim have done that, so kudos to you, Andrew, I'll turn it over to you.
That's correct. We looked at BSNA, BSNA is going to sunset their .NET platform, that's what we're currently using. They don't have an estimated timeframe, but they are sunsetting that and they are pushing everybody away from that. I asked our account representative straight up, like, you know, are you trying to force people to cloud? And she said, yes, you know, they're not, not that their service is lacking or anything, but they're just not training new people on .NET, they're not doing improvements to it that they used to, they're just focusing on the cloud because that's where the future is. And so with that, having to transition to the cloud anyways, I thought it would be a good time to look for other municipal accounting softwares that also operate on the cloud. So I checked out four other software programs in addition to BSNA, let's see, Rippling, Oracle NetSuite, Tyler Munus and UKG. So they all had advantages and disadvantages. The main thing, in the state of Michigan, we charge our equipment to various funds based on state rates, and so none of the other companies are local to Michigan like BSNA and therefore they didn't have the capabilities of performing that function. And they all said that they could make a workaround, but we want a program that works and is fully functional out of the box versus trying to do a workaround or something in a spreadsheet and then imported and whatnot when BSNA already has that capability, so there's no need to try to reinvent the wheel with that. Also, we've been having trouble with remote access into BSNA, like if I'm at a conference or, you know, if Tyler's at a conference and needs to approve payables, it's been difficult to remote in. We have a workaround in place, but it's not fully functional and this will provide online access anywhere you have a web browser with two-factor authentication, so it's still secure and protected, but it's more readily available to everybody. Another thing with the .NET is every two weeks they update, just a patch upgrade, not much of a upgrade, but just patching for security vulnerabilities and different things, but, so that takes, you know, quite a while for everything and also this will provide automatic backups for us and it's, they have two different server locations across America, undisclosed locations, you know, I don't know that much, but they, they just didn't say where they were, but two geographically separated locations in America, so that way then if something was to happen to one server, we would have redundancy on that. And then, yeah, and then adding the HR module would just really help with budgeting, onboarding new, new individuals and making our payroll function complete, because currently we're operating without a HR platform and so we make it work, but it would be nice to have the full functionality of that. It allows us to budget how people are spread between various departments, it really aids in that budgeting process. And then also has a employee portal, so they can go on there, update their mailing address, their beneficiary items, anything that they would need to do HR-wise or payroll-wise, they can log in and do that. And that's actually the same with time cards, they can now, or they would be able to on cloud, all employees can go and input their own time this way versus needing a dedicated machine to do that, as we currently have, to have a specific machine capable of BSNA. So, yeah. Any questions? I know I kind of covered a lot of ground there.
Here I have one question. We're asking for the city commission to approve, approve this proposal as presented. Can you speak to the lead time and the budgeting and when this will be?
Yeah, so as we're working on the budget right now, this would be paid for in next fiscal year, subject to the appropriations, you know, by the city commission in approving the budget, so the lead time's about three to four months, and so we're trying to figure out a good time to, to convert, because you'll be offline Thursday afternoon and then our Friday morning, we would be offline, not able to take payments or anything, and so we need to find a good time when we're not having a utility bill due or taxes due and then also not a payroll week and everything else, and so.
Fourth of July.
Yeah, maybe if we can get in that soon. They're about three to four months out, so we can try to schedule it, but yeah, over a holiday would be great if they can do it then and, yeah, it just enables a lot more security and different things, so, but that's why we're bringing it for you now, so we can execute this proposal and get on their waitlist and set up a time for our conversion.
We have fiber connection now, we had the city hall, so we had the bandwidth.
Yeah, that's not a issue. Good question.
Yeah, so a lot of the processes, that's, that's a great question, because a lot of the processes will run on their servers and not via bandwidth, so, so when I request a report, it will process on their computer and then transmit to us versus transmitting back and forth, so that's a great question. And that's also a limitation of our current software, is when I want to run a report or Jill's doing the utility bills, sometimes she has to wait a half an hour for it to process and she can't do anything else with her computer during that time because it's processing and hogging her computer. So now she'll be able to start the process, it will run on their servers, she can do other things and then continue on, so it will hopefully make us a lot more efficient with our time as well. And, I mean, there's a million other reasons I can tell, tell you, but I won't take up all your time tonight.
One thing I, two quick things, Mr. Mayor, I might, initially staff was, I would say more cold towards this idea, and that's right, I appreciate your due diligence, Andrew, on working through that. There's more opportunities with BSNA, it's more user-friendly, and in Andrew's mental and again, as we talk about the HR module, how we can use that. The one thing I've been preaching to staff is where we can be more efficient and save time, we can increase productivity. And it's, it's a morale booster for staff, that is point one percent on why I would say we should move forward with this, but when we're using technology, it's easier to navigate, it just makes everything run smoothly. I can tell you, when I've been remote, I've been on the phone with Andrew, that has been a challenge I'm not able to get in, and equally, there's been times where I've had to lay the finance department, when I go through the approval of bills, my update will freeze, you know, it's technology. And so those are a couple of small reasons, but this is the future, our handle will be forced in this regard, whether the other, but this way we can plan it on our terms versus. And the second thing is normally I don't want to put things in front of you prior to a budget approval, so I just want to lament that with this approval, this will be budgeted for, in the draft budget, which we already have a placeholder in there, but we are acknowledging that this is a purpose we will move forward with and to receive the fiscal approvals. Thank you.
Any vulnerability or issues in the interim here between now and the execution of the...
No, there, there's not really any vulnerabilities, I'd say, you know, our account rep is a good salesman and she said, because I was like, you know, we're, we're operating fine right now, right? And she goes, well, think about all the things that happen that might not be fine, you know, like Jill having to wait thirty minutes for her thing, you know? It's just part of our daily functions, right? So we don't really think of that as a limitation per se, but then when you step back and look at it from an outside perspective, you're like, oh jeez, I'm having to wait thirty minutes every time I run this report for billing software, is that really? Is that really a good thing? And so, you know, they're not vulnerabilities per se, but it's just, you know, lags in the system more than anything, really.
So what's the total amount here?
Yeah, so the total amount is for our current, if we were to go with just our current modules, it's 40,500 for the implementation and upgrade. And then it would be an additional 4,800 to add the HR module. So the 10,800, I was going to come to you requesting two new modules, human resources and purchasing orders. But we can add the second module later, so it doesn't have to be done right now. I think it will be very valuable for us, but it's not a, like, emergency need or a pressing... You know, I don't need it today, is what I'm trying to say there. And so what I... Uh, it would be 45,300 for the, the upgrade.
And then another 10,000 for the HR?
No, that, that's total for the, the current modules and HR. Sorry, I wrote that a little confusing, because the, the 10,000 was if we were to add the two new modules. But given the budget, I am just proposing adding the HR module for 4,800.
There's not, there's not a cost savings, like if you do the, the purchase order module included with it? Is it going to cost more later?
No, it, I mean, besides inflationary costs, it, it's not discounted as a bundle, no.
It's not a...
Yeah.
Commissioner Branson, Andrew and I have spent a lot of time together the last couple of weeks. And we've been looking at the way that staff, along with the approved purchasing policy, handles and conducts business. And so by potentially moving a purchase order system, a lot more collaboration is going to be needed to be done before the department heads. Andrew stated a very fair case of why we switched this, but we need more discussion. We can add it on later, but implementing the technology is one thing, but then the usability amongst our department heads and staff is another one. And that's one that, with the size of our operation, while not huge, there's enough moving parts. And we need to communicate that, check the boxes, and work with our department heads up for that. Something that we'll be looking to potentially add in the future.
Any other questions, a discussion?
I've got a question for Andrew.
Yes.
Just a quick summary, if you can, I'm looking through the, the proposal.
Yes.
From BSNA. At the very bottom, there's a number...
80,000.
Eighty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-five.
So they write their proposals really strangely. So they also include our yearly fees that we're already paying. So those are going up from about 20,000 to 25,000, so...
And those, we can't get away from, that's not part of this discussion, per se?
That's not part of the discussion because we're already paying them on .NET. So it's going to be a little bit more since it's server-based, and they're storing our data and everything else. But the main cost is in the conversion from the server-based one here versus to their cloud version.
So what we're, what's coming before us tonight is how much?
Tonight is 45,300.
And does that include the annual, or is that in addition to the annual?
That's just the, the upgrade. The annual will be separate in the budget meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, that's a great question. Yeah, it's, how they write there, because then, then that's the, adding the two modules. And then we're going to, all the training's going to be done via Teams, so they're not going to have to travel here. And it, even if they do travel here, our rep actually lives in the area, so mileage would be minimal if they were to travel. But so that travel cost and everything else would not be, you know, asked for as well.
And this saves, internally saves staff a lot of time from going from, from device to device, updating manually. This is done...
Definitely, because, yeah, on the first and fifteenth is update release day or patch day. And so I would say, Tyler, how long do you think it takes per program? About 15 minutes? Yeah, maybe 15, 20 minutes per program. And we have seven programs right now, so I probably, on the first and fifteenth, spend about an hour and a half updating when I first get here, you know? And so that is quite, you know, and that's per employee, right? You know, it's not just me doing that. And so it is quite a time suck. And then also, just another thing on efficiency with accounts payable now, when we get a bill, we'll be able to scan it in, and then it notifies the person that it's responsible for, the department head responsible for it, and they can acknowledge and sign off on it right away and also code it. So we're not losing invoices, we're not wondering, oh, did they get that? Did they sign it? Where's the invoice at? It's going to save a lot of time for department heads and everybody else. And you will not have to stamp things anymore to acknowledge.
I saw Jill getting excited.
Yeah, so, and it will just provide a, a great layout for staff to know what needs to be done and what's on their plate.
One thing, Commissioner, you mentioned the cost. Can you correct me if I'm wrong here? What would be a necessary server upgrade in terms of capacity and technology? Can I speak to it past that for the security cameras? By now, the new servers we purchased, with going to the cloud, that frees up capacity. To 95%, we believe, this server that we purchased will, will adapt rapidly. But we are, there's unrealized savings where we won't have to get a new server for security cameras. So if you factor that in a cost, you know, this goes down 10 to 20 grand.
Yeah, the quote for the, the new security cameras was 40,000 as well for another...
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
I've tried spending my savings with my wife, and that doesn't always work.
Okay, any other productive discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll, thank you.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Boheist?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Grok?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries, carrying on to planning commission appointment. Item number 10, would somebody make the motion other than Mr. Larry Branson?
I'll make a motion to appoint Larry Branson as the city commission representative to the planning commission, starting with the April meeting.
Jeremy? It's been moved to support it. Sorry to see you leave, but I understand the circumstances. I didn't really give you a lot of choice, did I?
You did not.
Dear...
I, I don't enjoy late table, but...
It's for the right reason. You got, you just get a lot on your plate professionally, and we all recognize that. Larry has a little more. More tenured folks have a little more time on their hands right now in our lives, so... There'll be a time when you'll come back. Everybody is clear on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries, congratulations, thank you, Larry. Before we carry on to the city manager's report, Jill, did you want to speak briefly to the clerk's report? I just, there were some things this week that I think are valued that I'd like, I'd ask for her to discuss.
Yes, I'll get all my other notes in as well. Like, those of you who have nomination petitions out, they're due in two weeks, 4:00 PM. I would prefer them before 4:00 PM, though, because that's a lot of things to go through. And then, yes, I'm gone at your May meeting, just an FYI. So, county clerk sends out a monthly report, and this month had their November audit stuff in it. I've been audited three times over the last year, and I think overall, we had an A. There were just like a few applications to vote that weren't filled out correctly by the voters for in-person, and then they weren't double-checked by the election inspectors. But yeah, other than that, we had 76% turnout in November. Roughly split between absent voters and early, in-person. 11% of our voters voted early. Local elections, so like the school, city commission, those are typically less than 20% of our voter for turnout, and most of that turnout is absent voters. Ballots went out for the May 6th election last week. Yeah. 1,500 people have requested a ballot, and as of this afternoon, I was at almost 20% returned. So, pretty good. We will be processing ballots early, so that's a new thing with proposal three. We can process ballots before election day. We will be doing that going forward, just because it's, gives me something to do the Saturday before the election, and I'm not here by myself. So we'll be doing that May 3rd, starting at 9:30, if you are interested in the process. And that's all I have, so...
The next question is May...
Six.
Six.
Yes, and then...
We have single, one, one item to vote on, that's the...
Yes.
O A I S D renewal of the new age.
Sure. I'm just administering it.
No, it's just a renewal.
It's something to do with a headly role back...
Are there, are there, is it two votes or is it one?
Just, it's just one thing, yeah. And then November 5th, the 4th is city commission election. And unfortunately, there might be a possibility of an August primary. We'll see, I'll let you know at our work session on April 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Please do, please let us know.
Yeah.
Anything else for Jill? Appreciate the update, Jill, that's pretty valuable. I sometimes think we, you're kind of the quiet forgotten one that we just take for granted, but your job is very, very important and reflects upon all of us. Lastly, I know that, Lindsay, you have a guest here, did you want to come up and introduce her, please?
I'll let you speak, but this is Brenna. She is the new Terrace Square event manager, and this is her third week.
Yes, so happy to be here. Again, I'm Brenna Skalink. I'm actually from around here, not here, but a little small town called Ravanna. Fun fact about that town is there's more cows than people, not much to go through there. We have one four-way stop. I went to Central Michigan University and got my bachelor's in recreation event management with a minor in hospitality and a focus in leadership. A couple of fun facts, I love to travel and I have two dogs that are my entire life. And I am so happy to be, be here and so grateful for this opportunity.
So, I mean, are you living locally, or you have, do you get a drive-aways, or...
So I am currently crashing with my aunt-uncle in Cedar Springs, but I just got an apartment in Granville.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions from the commission? Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
I, I know we're all very excited to have your, your leadership here for Terrace Square. And as you well know, I think that's an untapped resource for the city sometimes. I think sometimes you don't realize it could do so much more for us. And we're really looking forward to having somebody of your caliber come onboard and help us, because...
I really appreciate that.
Something we're really looking forward to, right, Lindsay?
Yes.
I know you are, too. And coming into the busy year, and hopefully the calendar's getting full.
It's booking up, if anyone wants a party.
And the farmer's market starts...
June 4th and ends September 24th, every Wednesday from 9:00 to 1:00 at Terrace Square.
Anything else from the commission? Thank you, Brianna, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Brenna.
Brenna, Brenna.
Before I call adjourn, just go down the dais, Jill.
I have nothing to add. I'm sorry.
Jeremy? Larry? Jack? You're gone next month? Don't you take another...
No, I'll be gone for steering committee meeting. Oh, I'll be gone for the DDA.
DDA, okay. So who's going to chair that? Do you have anybody?
Jacob and I'll figure that out.
Okay. Enter in, last call?
No, thank you.
Jill?
Good.
I'll call for the city manager's report, you're up, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have something to bring, there is some good news in my report. We are still waiting for the green light to move forward with the 32nd Avenue road repayment project. Just a reminder, the city has made aware of additional federal funding in January to the tune of $230,000. A lot of work by Bob Miller, Don Greaser, engineer, and James Trubor, managing director. That extra infusion for roads was good, however, we couldn't use that on any road. We used a federally eligible road. And so that was limited, we're going to do it, however, the 32nd does need repayment. We had everything that we needed from the engineers submitted late January, early February. However, we're still waiting for the state historic preservation office to give us the green light. Why do I mention this? Because had we had hit the timetable that we thought was very practical, we could have done the paving in the summer, as it now it looks like. It will be pushed back to August, when school starts. This was out of the city's hands. Again, we were made, made aware of the funding in January, and it was taken early, one opportunity to get it out of this fiscal year. Fortunately, we were able to mobilize and get our team together, get the design engineering done and for submission. So it's not ideal, but for $230,000 on roads that need it, we'll put the schools on inconvenience.
Yeah, I'll need to tell the school board.
I will, I will communicate to superintendent Anna Jett and Darren, I'll let him know. It's a, you know, we've had two delays, one for Eagle in regards to the very certain realignment in this one. You know, one thing that I'll tell members of the public, as I'll tell you guys, is our funding mechanism for roads is broken. I will repeat that. Our funding mechanism in this state for roads is broken. We're being asked to do more with less resources that are keeping up with inflation. And so we are getting creative in our approaches. In opportunities like this, we seize the day on it and it creates an inconvenience. But we'll, we'll talk with the schools. There's still a chance, maybe, that we can get the project done, and we'll try to do that, but giving the form right now. I want to give Jacob McGar, Sarah Stephens, and the staff at the Outwork Discovery Center some major kudos with regards to the two M D N R grants submitted. Jacob, Jacob made it sound like it was a pretty easy process. This is a complex project, and there's a high level of collaboration with ODC to the point where the M D N R didn't have answers to our questions. And we were told things, and then they went up the chain, and we had to undo a lot. So when those two pull off and working with Dave Nitre and that team, it's probably the most difficult grant application we've put together in a long time here. So just want to make sure we highlight the efforts of those two. As Andrew mentioned, we're in budget season, pretty much just moving into Andrew's office, conference room B for this month. Just a reminder to the public, department heads submit their budget requests in January and February. Andrew and Ashley Peter, our deputy finance director, sit down with each department head to review and discuss the budget. Upon the completion of that, then I sit down with Andrew. We go fund by fund, GL number by GL number, all departments, all funds, we look at everything. It's a true testament to the way that we budget here in Hudsonville, you know, and just trying to carry the legacy of fiscal stability that some of you have been, been part of. After Andrew and I do that, we take additional feedback from work sessions. We'll take additional work, feedback from the budget workshop as well. Then we constantly nickel and dime as we get updated numbers. And while we have a draft budget right now, there's still going to be some movement there. And you know, our goal, as always, is to bring you a print polished product for your May meeting. But we look forward to your feedback, and we can adjust there when we look to approve the budget for fiscal year 25, 26, and G. Just a couple more things. May 4th to May 10th is National Clerk's Week. Joe Grappin will not be here for this meeting the next week. So Joe Grappin, happy future National Clerk's Week, you are appreciated, valued, and we are very fortunate to have you. And Avery as well, obviously, you're the main component of your day-to-day responsibilities, definitely with elections. Jill, it's a pleasure to work for you, and National, Happy Clerk's Week, a month in advance.
Thank you.
And then finally, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, April 22nd, we get a workshop scheduled. There is need to switch that main workshop to a special meeting. There will be two to three action items on that, and we'll still meet downstairs. I did brief the mayor on some of those items. We could have brought them tonight, but it would have been rushed, and there's a couple more questions I'd like to have answered. That meeting will start at 6:00 PM. We have a few discussion items on the agenda plane as well. With the, the biggest item on the agenda would be the capital improvements plan discussion. We're all provided with an updated draft CIP. We're all provided with an updated draft C I P. Your last meeting, I encourage you to review that, ask any questions in advance for clarification, but we look forward to, sending that to you. I am looking forward to a full session. Unless there's any questions or comments, Mr. Mayor, that is, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? DAF? Commissioners? Hearing none, we are adjourned.